Our fifteenth annual NSS Town Meeting is now in session. My name is Jeffrey List, I have the honor of privilege of serving as Senior Vice President of the organization. On my right is Kirby Aiken, who's Chairman of the Board of Directors of National Space Society. To my left is George Whitesides, our new Executive Director. His left is Jim Plasko, our Vice President of Chapters. Most of us, with the exception of George, are long familiar to you, and George, I think, will grow on you very fast. I thank you very much for getting up this morning to come here for these Town Meetings. This Town Meeting is an institution, I think, unique among space organizations. It's a chance where the... it's a place where the officers of the Association come together to face their members directly, to tell you a little bit about where we've been, where we're going, and most of all, to be available to you to answer your questions about where we've been and where we're going. And that's basically what we're all here for. We'll tell a little bit this morning about some of our upcoming plans again, particularly in terms of policy. I think, maybe we'll just start because he's new and doesn't know better. Let's start with George Whitesides, give him a little bit more update than we got last night off. At the dinner about...
He's just a boy!
There's that. We're trying to get younger in this organization. And about where we're going, and what George sees as our plans for the next six months to a year, and what he's looking forward to. George?
Okay. Well, first of all, I'm gonna begin by saying that I think that this ISDC was a great success. I had a wonderful time, and I really want to extend my personal thanks and congratulations to the folks who made it all possible, in particular Claire McMurray. After several days, I think I mastered your last name. Yeah, I think I have a solid grasp of it. I'm pretty sure what it used to be and what it is. And also, of course, Tom and everybody else on the team, just spectacular. I thought it was great, and just, I'm just turned, it was wonderful. So, thanks. And, you know, thanks to everybody for being here. I think, you know, it was certainly unusual to hold a big space conference in Oklahoma, but I think it was a really great idea, and I think we all have come away with greater appreciation of all the things that are going on in Oklahoma. And so, that's a, that's a great thing. I know I enjoyed talking with the local companies. I had breakfast with George French, who runs Rocket Plane, one of the prominent local companies. And, of course, having Mary Fallon here, Lieutenant Governor, was an honor, and I think I look forward to trying to build that relationship in the future. In terms of the National Space Society, we've got a lot going on. A lot going on. And looking forward to having as many people as possible involved in what we're doing. You know, we opened the conference by noting that this is a really remarkable time for space, and I think the conference reflected that. You know, we saw how much activity is going on in suborbital spaceflight, and that's really, I think, going to be one of the major focuses of the society over the next period of time. We want to do what we can, great. We want to do what we can to, to... it's like presents are being opened up or anything. We want to do what we can to promote this and to get our members into space, and this zero-gravity flight is one of the examples. We're also going to be trying to do much more. You know, as many of you know, the X Prize flights are expected to be this summer sometime, when is not exactly clear. And we're talking with X Prize about trying to get our members some special deals related to the summer events. Everybody's best guess is that the first attempts are going to be out of Mojave, California, and those of you who are interested may want to even consider coming out for those flights. Some people talk about some kind of sort of a woodstock for suborbital spaceflight, you know, the summer is fit. So, we'll see what happens, but I'll certainly try to be there, and we'd love to see as many of you as possible. Obviously, we've got the Legislative Conference, the Moon-Mars Blitz coming up, and I've been really encouraged to hear how many people are thinking about coming. I think we're going to have a really strong NSS presence, and that's going to be wonderful. On my level, it's just going to be wonderful because we're going to have people from fifteen different space groups there at the same time. I've never, I don't think I've ever been to something with fifteen different space groups, you know, at one time.
We had fifteen different spaces. Why, why, it's a secret, it's a secret.
It's cool stuff, this one.
So, thanks for bringing that over. But, you know, that's, that's going to be a big deal, and it's going to be a really fun deal, so I hope as many of you as possible can come to that. Moving sort of forward in the years, as you know, I think this is the thirtieth anniversary of the National Space Society, and sort of next year will be the thirtieth anniversary of L-5, from what I have been told. So, we have sort of an interesting opportunity to celebrate both organizations, the roots of this organization, for a full year. We'll be doing sort of themes around that for, for the whole year. We're going to try to throw a sort of a celebratory event sometime in the winter, which should be great, and which should attract a lot of attention, I think. We will be pushing both the Moon-Mars Initiative and suborbital space. I think they're both important to what our ultimate goals are. And I think it's important that we had a sort of a renewed commitment to the roadmap to this ISDC, because I think that's a really, that's something that makes National Space Society unique, and that we've really thought through how do we, how do we break down these barriers to get ourselves a space-faring civilization. And so, I'm looking forward to the results of a new task force that we've got, that will sort of figure out how to implement the roadmap. I don't know how many of you have read it, but it's a really great document, and I commend it to me. I think that is all I'm going to say for now, with the proviso that I want to reserve some time at the end for something related to that box.
I'd like this time to turn the alleged microphone over to Kirby Aiken, Chair of our Executive Committee, former President of National Space Society of Australia, for perspective on the state of things outside the United States.
First of all, I'd like to add my thanks to everybody for being here. If you're like me, it seems you haven't been to bed before two for several days, so it's increasingly difficult to get up in the morning. Just, I'd like to add, before I talk a little bit about the international perspective, just from my own point of view, just as an NSSer, forgetting your background, where you come from, I've been with the NSS and its predecessor organizations for nineteen years. And in fact, I joined in eighty-five. I became Chapter President at the first meeting that I turned up to, and I had to do my first chapter newsletter just post-challenging, so it was a fairly rocky introduction to the pro-space movement. But in all of those nineteen years that I've been in space, I cannot remember us ever having an opportunity like we have today. As far as I'm concerned, and from my own perspective, we've been waiting for somebody to say, "Let's go back to the moon and onto Mars." And your president said that, and it's almost like shock. For all this time, we've been trying to get a statement like this. Okay, there's a long way to go to actually translating that into action and making it happen, but, and maybe it's just my external perspective, but it seems to me, for the first time in my pro-space days, we've actually got the first stage of what we want. So, that's a positive thing, but it also means that we've got to be very, very energetic in trying to translate that into reality. So, that's kind of just a global look. It's my personal perspective, and that makes it an extremely exciting time for us. If I take the international perspective, it generated an enormous amount of interest all around the world. The coverage in Sydney, my home city, in the mainstream press, newspapers, television, everywhere else, even from the pre-announcement excitement, when the word got out that something was coming, it attracted a lot of attention. And the best that I understand, that there are a lot of other countries around here, I believe France and Russia in particular, have kind of put their hand up pretty quickly and said, "Hey, we want to be part of this." So, that's all very encouraging. It's going to take some time, I think, to try to establish exactly what things that each of us can do, and in particular, the members elsewhere around the world. And it's wonderful to be able to say that we had people here at this conference from Australia, France, Ireland, England, all of whom represent different constituencies of the National Space Society. I'd like to quickly touch on something that George noted, which was the roadmap. And I personally think that the roadmap is an incredibly important and powerful tool for both the National Space Society and also for opening the space frontier, because it's only when you sit down and really, really think about the things that have to change, or the things that we expect to see along the way towards the space-faring civilization that we want, once you look at what we see, or what we believe needs to happen, and then you think about the change that we need to create or induce, it's only at that point that we can really be truly effective in the activities that NSS and its membership needs to undertake. So, during the committee meetings, and we'll even have been to more committee meetings than you can probably stick at in this last couple of days, it really came out quite clearly that we'd need to complete that roadmap process. We got sort of through a strategic level, and now we want to delve down to the tactical level. And the importance of that is that, at the end of the day, we can identify, I think it's up to fifteen roadblocks at this point in time, and each year you review things a bit more, sometimes you add another one or take one away, hopefully, as we achieve them. But you can look at those particular roadblocks and say, "Okay, exactly what do we have to do to remove it?" And you can take that down to a tactical level. The beauty of that is that every one of you, either as an individual activist or as a chapter member, can play some little role. You can find some activity that you can do that helps you, helps us as a group overcome one particular barrier along the way. And that makes it much easier and clearer for each of us to know exactly what we need to do. It also makes it easier and clearer for us to track what we're doing. So, even though we have a pretty long-term objective, we can see that we're making clear steps in that direction. So, now we have a kind of specific opportunity before us, we're going to try to complete the roadmap. That's not a simple task, it's not going to happen overnight. And in fact, one of the things that I find wonderful about NSS, and I see it in no other organization, and I belong to a number of them, but I put all of my time into the National Space Society, and that is that in trying to create a space-faring civilization, space settlement, you need people from every quarter of life. So, whatever your skill set, whatever your background, you have a role to play. And getting down to that tactical level with the roadmap will hopefully uncover exactly what role you can play in this grand adventure and vision that we have. So, yes, I'm very excited about this, even though I've been around the society for a long time, this is what I feel like a grand opportunity for us, and I think that engages our members internationally as well as obviously here, sort of the heartland of the space movement. So, that's about all I'd say for the moment.
I'd like to turn it over now to Jim Plasko, our Vice President of Chapters, for some observations on where the heart and soul of our society is, the field. Jim?
Thank you. Can y'all hear me okay back there?
Huh?
Thank you, thank you.
Welcome to my club.
Huh?
Welcome to my club.
Let's see, where to start? Chapters are such a big field, because it's such a large component of National Space Society, especially when you consider that, you know, for the most part, it is our, one of our primary points of contact with the American public. And that is, as I believe, as it should be, because, you know, there's nothing like having the personal touch in a business. Businesses emphasize that. And for us, our business is educating the public about the value of space exploration, about the knowledge to be gained there, about how it can improve everyone's lives. And that's why I'm in the NSS, is so that I can help share my knowledge with the public and do my little part to contribute to helping us all to create a space-faring civilization. And what I would like to really see for the coming years is more cooperation between the chapters, more sharing of information, because we have many chapters that have very successful projects, and I don't think we should be bashful about asking them, "How did you do that?" And we've had, two thousand and three was not a bad year, because we picked up several new chapters, and we also reaffirmed our relationship with one very old-standing and very active space organization, the Minnesota Space Frontier Society. And I would hope that we can continue this streak of growth into the future. And once we all get caught up on our sleep, go back home, re-energized, and really relate to the people who couldn't be here, just what happened, share our experiences, and see if we can't make it harder to pick out the winning events for next year's chapter awards, make it really challenging, or maybe make it so we have to give out twenty awards to chapters, because we've all done such a great job.
Thank you. And I'd like now to turn it over to our newly-joined fifth-member panel, Cliff McMurray, who was signed from the scurrying round of last year, trying to help make sure this thing came out as well as it did. Serves as our Executive Vice President and is our Chief Policy Advisor. Cliff?
Well, I don't think anybody's ever accused me of needing a microphone, so I won't even talk in that direction. Some of you who know me know that I keep a file of quotations that I like and add to it from time to time. I suppose I'd like to share a couple with you from that file. One fairly old and one recent, and the older one is by Pericles, who said, "Twenty-five-hundred years ago, just because you don't take an interest in politics doesn't mean that politics won't take an interest in you." Somebody is out there, a lot of somebodies, with a different agenda than ours, who wants to see a different kind of future than the kind of future that we want. Somebody is out there actively promoting their idea of what the future should be. And if indeed we want to see our particular future come to pass, we have no choice but to enter the arena of public debate and try and persuade our fellow citizens and our elected officials that our version of the future is the one that ought to prevail. Our charter says that we are in the business of creating a space-faring civilization. It doesn't say that we're in the business of wishing for a space-faring civilization. It doesn't say that we're in the business of watching while a space-faring civilization is built. It's for us to build. The more recent quote, which applies to all kinds of things, is an Arab proverb, says, "The dogs bark, but the caravan moves on." The caravan does indeed move on. Caravan is moving on. The question is, in which direction is the caravan moving? And are we the bark of dogs, or are we driving the camels? Okay? So, one thing that concerns me a great deal in looking at the, correct me if I'm wrong, the Chinese symbol for crisis is danger and opportunity in the same, combined in the same idiom. Is that correct?
What's the source of it?
I believe that is correct, and that is truly what we have now, because we have tremendous opportunities and we do have tremendous dangers, not just coming at us from the direction of politicians who don't want to see money spent in this particular way, but in the form of a very widespread attitude from one end of the country to the other, that nobody should ever be allowed to die. You know, we are going to lose people. We've lost a few already, and if we were really doing it right, we would have lost even more by now. And this is going to happen, and when it happens, we have to be prepared to make the argument that it's okay for people to die in the pursuit of what they, of noble things or even ignoble things, as long as it's what they want to do with their lives. We all have the same mortality system. It's precisely the same mortality system, statistic, one person, one death, sooner or later. And so, the question is not, "Does any of us get out of here alive?", it's questioning what we do with our lives while we're here. And a different attitude has arisen, I think, I suspect, because although the absolute lifespan, as some part of Potter said to me this week, the absolute lifespan has not really gotten much longer, but the average lifespan over the last generation or two has increased quite a bit. So, it's possible, I think, that one of the reasons why this aversion to risk has occurred is because people have more to lose. They're not dying at a younger age, so they want to preserve all their years. It's okay for people to do that if they want to stay at home themselves and be safe. But it's not okay for them to say that other people can't make a different choice. And that's, I think, a really important message for us to carry, is that for those of us who want a future that has more risks and more glory, we have a right to do that. So, I hope you all come to the Washington Legislative Conference, but it's not just a legislative conference, it's a, it's a long, sustained battle to change the way people think. And that's what I had to say.
You know, it's often been said, there's poetry in space, and I think some of us might be surprised to find there's such eloquence here, right down in Oklahoma, on this panel. Nice, it's just a nice phrase, very good thoughts. I'd like to add a couple of things. Again, my appreciation to the people in Oklahoma City who work so hard to provide a gathering place for us all here. These conferences are important for a lot of reasons. First and foremost, it does allow those of us who are out laboring the vineyards to come together, to remind ourselves that we're not alone out there, to recharge our batteries, and to give us hope that we can go forth and actually produce something during the next growing season. Next year, I think we'll build on this, we're going to be in Washington DC for ISDC two thousand and five, and Washington is a unique location for any ISDC. It's like, it's like going to Rome, or going to Mecca. We go to Washington DC, we're going to the fulcrum of power, where things can actually change. There are things we can do in conferences in Washington DC that we can't do anywhere else. There are things in Washington DC that should attract us and make us flop there. This is a, this is a crowd, I notice I've seen many of you at conferences for ten years. If we, if things fall into place, we might finally be able to beat our attendance from ten years ago, get back into the four-fingers range. We should have a great time next year, and I expect to see all of you there, and each one of you bringing three or four of your colleagues. We could do great things down there. And you probably have heard a lot of it, but there's an awful lot of out-of-the-box thinking going on down there, pioneering new directions for us, which gets me to one of the most interesting insights that I had here at this conference, and I either thank or blame Dave Stewart for this. When most of us in this room got started in space advocacy, this was basically in the days before the internet and before the multiplicity of space organizations. So, if you're interested in space, basically, there was only one organization, other than perhaps the Planetary Society, who liked to send cameras places, and there was only one source of space news, ATASTRA, or whatever it was then called. And so, it was pretty, as a way, it was pretty easy for us. If you're interested, come to NSS, we will provide information for you, we'll provide something you can do to help get the space movement founded. Well, it's a different world right now. There are fifteen people in this coalition, other space organizations. We have the internet, so people don't have to wait for a monthly, bi-monthly, or quarterly magazine for the latest that's going on in space, and organizationally, things are diluted. Kirby pointed out yesterday at one of our meetings that we are the only organization of all the space organizations whose real focus is space settlement. We're not interested in low-risk commercialization, we're not interested in this particular place versus that particular place. We are interested in getting the human species off Earth. So, our organization has a unique function. We help all, in that sense, we're a big tent, but we were the ones who have to keep the focus on. Space is for people. Space is for growth. Space is to constantly increase the number of people off Earth. And that is our unique mission. That is the thing we focus on, that's the thing that makes us different from all the organizations, or if you will, it's the thing that makes us special. In some sense, why join NSS is because we are the organization that's dedicated to promoting the better future for all of us. Between our Legislative Conference and the ISDCs, it's really important that we get there, show the flag, and help bring attention to the movement. This legislative, this legislative year, as been pointed out, is really crucial. We've been going along the meandering path that sooner or later someday might get us off Earth into the stars. And suddenly, someone has said, "Look, there's a new pathway opening up here. If we step off this, off where we're going, take this new pathway, we could cut off decades of getting there." And then there are people who say, "Well, do we really want to do that? I don't know." Well, this is the opportunity we have to force the country to take this new pathway that this administration pointed out for it. It's a real crux. If we can get the NASA budget congressional redirection, we will set the country on this path where they acknowledge, "Yes, we are going to space, and hopefully, we are going to space to stay." And once we start it, well, it may go faster, it may go slower, but we will at least be going in that direction. If we do not take this path this time around, we may be on the meandering path for a lot longer, another ten, twenty years before an opportunity comes up again, or becomes politically acceptable proposal. That is why it is very important that this year, for the first time in a decade, we actually have a chance to do something, and we've got to take advantage of it. Now, I know that everybody's not going to be able to come to Washington for the Legislative Conference, but we're going to make plans that if you can't, at least you can do something in your home district. But this is crucial. We're a focal point in history, and it's basically up to us, the believers, to do I think that we've all had our chance to say what our mind, now it's open the floor for people who have questions, suggestions, recommendations, or any other quality of oral expression that you think is polite and appropriate.
Or non-verbal communication, whatever. We can understand that, too.
Sounds live. Okay, Jim? Why did you understand, when I speak, would you please state your name and chapter affiliation, if any?
Stand up.
Or no, you can just state your name and chapter affiliation.
Jim Stumm, NSS Western Spaceport Chapter. I'm glad that you touched upon, with the advent of the internet, that people can get their information when you mention launches and certain things like that. With regards to ATASTRA, I'm glad to see that they've expanded the pages for the chapter contacts. contacts, slightly larger print for those of us that are starting to get presbyopia and everything. But, you know, since you do mention that, you know, anybody now in the internet may know when launches are, I'd rather see the launch space stuff of AdAstra, since it's listing stuff that happened two months ago, four months ago. I'd rather see that stuff reutilized and list more of the contacts within NSS as far as the chairmanships, the committees, points of contact, email addresses on these individuals, in case there are people out there in society. Let's say you have a public affairs committee. Obviously, if you have folks in the society that have any public relations bent, they may be able to contribute to the committee. Same thing with, you know, space advocacy or legislative affairs or fundraising, things like that. There isn't any real listing in there, other than just the name of the Board of Advisors, the Board of Directors, the Board of Governors, but they don't give a contact as far as a mailing address, email address, phone number for any of these officers or chairpersons of these committees, or even agendas, as far as when meetings are going to be taking place, whether it's the board meeting, board minutes, those type of things. I think being a little bit more open with the society members will retain some of the membership and actually contribute to the great cause.
Could I throw a quick show of hands here? How many of you think that the typeface on the interior of AdAstra is okay, but the typeface on the first several pages really stinks? Am I the only one who thinks that?
How do you feel about it?
Well, I may be a minority opinion, but, I mean...
Which part don't you like, the front?
The front has that real thin, spidery kind of writing that makes me magnify.
Actually, that's before he's had his beard.
I may be a minority opinion on that. I just wanted to, obviously, we didn't have an overwhelming show of hands, so...
I tell you what.
You have to identify yourself, Claire, before you can speak.
Sorry. Claire McMurray, Oklahoma Space Alliance Chapter. And I have to tell you that it used to be, I didn't bother reading AdAstra unless I wanted to look up some contact information or something. The last couple of issues, I really wanted to read a little bit of it and then lost it before I could finish. But, yeah, that very thin type is very hard to read. I like a lot of contrast fonts. I wear tribunals.
There is a reason why Times New Roman is the most popular.
And it's fine to look different, and I don't care if it's a slightly different font, but I do want it to be visible.
When you first came in, John Strickland, Houston Space Frontier. Oh, when we first came in, you were talking about some upcoming events, and Kirby suggested, I think made a good suggestion, that there should be some kind of a listing, perhaps something on the website, of upcoming space-related events. And I thought maybe, for example, on the web, you can color code your different topics. You could use like one color for organizational events, another color for manned spaceflight events, and a third color for unmanned events, or whatever. To give people a way to quickly find the events they're particularly interested in or concerned with, and have it all in one list and sequence into the future. Put that in the website, and people can see what's about to be happening, and it gives them clues to what's upcoming right away and what's coming up in the near future. So that's something, something to consider, putting in the website, and various people can send in events that they've learned about, and they can integrate it.
If I could just add to what John was saying, that what spurred it in my mind was, we were talking about Cassini, and I remember when it was launched, it being approached by a couple of different television stations. And at the time, NSS had put out like a fact sheet, and I was amazed, and I'm not a scientist or an engineer, I was amazed, watching the TV interview afterwards, how knowledgeable I could sound, talking about this, having absolutely nothing about it in the technical sense before those television interviews. And so it would be, in a perfect world, a combination of both, a calendar of what interesting space events were coming up, combined with hopefully a little fact sheet that could go behind that, and a chapter or an individual could take. And if you know that there's an event coming up, you can be prepared for it as well. I mean, you can base activities around it, or you can simply respond in a public relations or public affairs sort of sense.
More damage control as far as the anti-Cassini, the new radar.
There's a question, there's a question back there?
King Quay, I've tried to join the Kaya Boavelli Space Society three times in the last year, but haven't succeeded yet. Would you like to form your own chapter? You don't know how rural I am. Unless I should pick up on the gentleman from the Western Space Alliance's points, which he also made a couple of days ago. Roche Parcol said four hundred years ago that almost all our failings are more, how to put it, you can forgive them more easily than the means we try and use to hide our failings.
Probably as a cover-up.
Well, I mean, in other words, computers crash. I mean, there's nothing unusual about that, there's nothing unforgivable about that. Most of them, I think, if, my own personal experience is, most of the members don't really know what's going on, except that the magazine is coming out less often. They're kind of confused about what's happening in Washington DC. And remember that for a lot of the members, particularly younger ones, a thirty-year-old member wasn't even born when the NSS was formed or the L-5 Society was formed. And if a young gentleman that spoke yesterday is correct, and Mr. Eichen is quite normal among space advocates, and that is, the data that Lou Friedman of the Planetary Society collected said that the Planetary Society, National Space Society, overlap in membership is between twenty-five and thirty-three percent. So that, so that a large percent, or a large, in other words, Von Braun and O'Neill and Sagan are all dead, okay, if you're under thirty. So a lot of the, a lot of the fights that occurred in the sixties and seventies and eighties for someone who is nineties and the millennium, it's very hard for them to understand what those, what those fights are all about. So I think the gentleman from the Western Space Alliance, a lot of the suggestions, I think, are very good.
Wait, I'm totally sure I understand. So, because I want to make sure that, I think, there is some really good points, but, so, so my impression of what Jim was saying was that he was talking about, you know, putting information in about contacts and, and stuff like that.
But he also spoke a couple of days ago, the chapter meeting, too, simply of information.
The letter from the director, I explained this before.
Letter, and also there was debate at that particular meeting as to whether I ought to go to all members or just chapter heads. I don't think, I don't think the specifics matter so much as the, as the point that he made earlier.
Regarding AdAstra for a moment.
I understand.
We're looking at some, some various possibilities. We do have a limited financial resource to put the magazine out, and we would like, we would like, if possible, to trim that without losing the quality of the magazine. And we would also, if we're at all possible, like to pump the frequency of the magazine back up to bi-monthly. I mean, that would be one of the things, if we could afford to do it. But the question is, how can we do that? And I would like to see, if I may, take another couple of quick polls, how many people would rather see the magazine come out six times a year and be slightly thinner? How many people would choke if the magazine were not quite, quite on such glossy, like, paper? If we went to, something that had really good color reproduction but was not quite so fine a paper?
Keep the outer wrapping.
Yeah.
Yeah, the outer wrapping should be glossy.
Right. But as long as the interior color reproduction was still good, we could possibly go to a slightly less fancy paper? How many would go for that?
I would think as long as the content is kept high. The information is what's essential.
Okay.
Whether it's a pretty picture.
Well, I think the pretty pictures are good, because I think there's a segment of our membership that that's important.
The O-H back.
If you want something that's a pretty picture.
And last of all, as a third option, how would, how would you all feel if we kept the magazine just the way it is, trimmed costs a little bit, but managed to get out a, say, a four-page newsletter in the off months? How do you all feel about that?
You mean like supplemental?
Yeah, supplemental. How do you, would you prefer that to getting the magazine itself more frequently?
I think it's the representative group of AdAstra.
Yeah.
Well, it's not, but it's a data point.
Call it gelified Zeus. How about going to an online version and cut alarms, and quite a few people would take just online rather than dark copy?
You know, we've looked at that, and basically what we've determined is that those magazines tend to wither away and die. And I agree with that. It's just, it's not an option, I don't think, at this time.
Content, to me, is really important, and it's not just being very, when you say content, it's very, very broad. What I'd like to see, as you probably noticed, I have the name of my panels, track panels, those pathways to the space frontier, but just try to emphasize the fact that there are different pathways, and that people have different ideas of what we should be doing and how we should be doing it. And open debate and discussion of these issues is one of the healthiest things that we can do. And not necessarily saying that the NSS has to endorse any particular position, but simply bringing the discussion of the different possible ways to do it out in the open, instead of trying to keeping it under cover, as if, as if there was never any debate or discussion or disagreement on things. That's not the way human beings work. Human beings are always discussing and debating, and sometimes disagreeing and sometimes agreeing. So one part of the content should be the discussion of different pathways, and it should be also current events, future, mid-future events, and far-future events. Like, we ought to have, you know, like, discussion of the moon, Mars, and every issue or so, we should have something about what's going to be going, going to be going on fifty and a hundred years from now. So we have a sort of a full spectrum of the current events, future events.
Can I ask you a question, a question here? I know this is very unspecific, but just in general, if I gave you a choice of content, general content of the magazine, and you said very satisfied, satisfied, somewhat satisfied, or dissatisfied, could you just show of hands, how many people are very satisfied with the content in general?
Very satisfied.
How many would describe themselves as satisfied with the content? How many would describe themselves as somewhat satisfied? And how many would describe themselves as dissatisfied? Okay? Our lost brethren from Minneapolis. Okay, and let's give some guidance. Really, basically, as it looks for, at least for our group of poor people, we seem to be doing the right thing, but we're missing something, that we could be better. I would like to see who, when you get home, to drop an email to our friend George here, with basically suggestions of what you think AdAstra could do differently. Because I think we have a committee that's also been looking at this, and this would be a good data point for them, and this is your chance to influence the magazine of your society.
Now, see, if all the committee information was on the web, in the magazine somewhere, you could go directly to them when you do something like that.
We're working towards something like that, but, you know...
That is one of the things we're doing. I don't know how many people are aware of it, but now, the NSS website is being developed and maintained by us. People who are doing it are all chapter activists. And that is one of the things that has come up in our discussions, is about expanding the amount of information that's on the website, which would be additional information that would be helpful to chapters, contact information that'd be helpful to members, especially with regards to the various committees, who's chairing those committees. And we also want to see an expansion of content that's available there. And there are also some other really big things that are in the works that should become available, both to our members and to our chapter leaders, that they would all find very useful. And I'll leave it at that.
...from meetings like board meetings, executive committee meetings, I know there's some things you have to black out because of... But there's a lot of stuff in there that, the information may be some of the membership wants to know.
As to the content of specific meetings, that would be a decision to be made by that particular committee. However, since the committees and their members will be made known to the members, there's nothing to stop you from writing to the people or the chair of that committee. Anyway, I've taken your note, I hear it, and we'll try to move on that right.
Do you want to continue this thread about AdAstra, or we move to a new thread? I'll take questions on the AdAstra thread.
AdAstra.
Okay, Claire.
We had two people yesterday who wanted to join the National Space Society, couldn't just give them a membership for sure, that had the old address on it and the old prices on it.
We'll take the old prices.
But just a minute. So what I did is I put on my best reading glasses, which for the tiny print on the contents page, it said how much it cost, took a sticker with the new address, and put it on the thing and handed them that. We need to have something a little easier to find about new membership actually in AdAstra, and I would strongly recommend a downloadable membership for sure that's kept up to date on the website. Thank you.
Are you on the AdAstra thread, Larry?
Yes.
Okay. Because we have other people on the next threads who are watching. Go ahead.
Variator, Chicago Space Frontier, L-5. I just want to say that AdAstra's gotten better the last few years in one respect, but we need to do something about us, in the sense that a lot of nonprofit organizations, they talk, you get their magazines, there's a lot about what those organizations are doing. And when you look at ours, you see a lot about what's going on in space, but you don't see very much about us in our own magazine. We need to expand with chapters and what NSS is doing. We see the conferences, but like Jim was saying, we need to see what we're doing between the conferences, the committees. We need to see all the things that are happening out there that we're doing. We're excited here, but we go back and we don't tell the world about it. We need to tell, this is an instrument that we need to tell them what we're doing. More people may buy into the family.
AdAstra thread?
I'm sorry, I get a little excited about this.
You were up first, Jim, then Scott, and I think we'll move to another subject.
To piggyback on what Claire had suggested, just so everybody is aware, I had already forwarded to George a preliminary template membership form, which George more or less agreed is something that's necessary. I'm gonna, once I get back home, back to my office tomorrow, Tuesday, I'll be uploading that to Jay Whittaker, so they can convert it into both a PDF file as well as the Word document that I currently have. It is a one-sheet, eleven by fourteen, it's actually styled after the Planetary Society, thorough one that they had at airshows and various other venues. But to go a little bit further with that, I think when you get somebody who's coming in off the street and has never heard of the National Space Society until they've visited the website, or they've been to it a minute where they've seen the brochure, I fear that most people, being from the general public, get sticker shock when they see the... I fear that most people, being from the general public, get sticker shock when they see the price range on here. And the same thing with the pull-down menu as far as the various prices of membership. I think if you just, to at least get their, the camel's nose into the tent type thing, you want to just stick with a basic membership price, either the individual rate and the senior slash student rate and an international rate. Forget about the buzz on the council. You know, somebody who sees $5,000, they're gonna walk away with it. They see the $1,000 visionary, you do that after they've become a member. That's where your direct nail comes out. And you say, okay, if you want to contribute more to the society, here's some of the programs.
I think you're on the right direction. In fact, some of the latest brochures we've prepared on top have membership and then additional contribution.
Right.
And they can do whatever they want.
And you really don't need, I mean, this additional space could be deleted and something else put in there. Just give the basic information of the benefits as far as the one-year subscription to AdAstra, you know, opportunity to join a chapter, participate in the society's accomplishments.
Let me just say that that brochure was done by a previous executive director who disregarded the membership's committees and the outside experts' recommendations.
Also on a topic I would just like to mention, if someone did come on the website the other day and sign up at the $1,200 membership level.
You're gonna get this, but I think the vast majority of the people as far as the general public are folks that are in your lower to middle-income families that have kids. And I've had folks that go, geez, I can't afford $38 or $45 for regular membership. And I'll say, okay, do you have any kids? Why, yes, I do. I go, well, then, great, put it in your child's name. They read your Sunday comics, why can't she read their magazine?
Jim, let me add something. Those who are selling memberships directly, because of the chapter rebate system, just anybody who sells has the authority essentially to give a rebate on the spot. And they can sell it for a lower price as long as it's over the $20 minimum that goes to headquarters. But for practical purposes, we still have to have one official price, in terms of what's your membership dues. And one of the things that we're talking about in board meetings is having periodic special author thing on the website. If you sign up this week, it will be X dollars. It won't change our base rate, but we may find ourselves doing these offers more regularly. We're gonna test all this stuff.
At the same time, I caution you that you should also try to regain at a level of parity with the other organizations that are out there with their membership rates. Because if somebody goes, National Space Society, $45, Planetary Society, $35.
I know, but it costs more to lift people than it costs to lift cameras, so... But we were understanding. Scott, you have the last comment on this thread, then we're gonna move to the next thread.
I kind of run off to back to Larry Aaron saying about, by the way, Scott, you're gonna move to the Space Frontier Society.
Now a chapter you have from the National Space Society.
So I do appreciate the fact that the national organization certainly accomplished more than a small chapter. But what I'm dissatisfied with at Astra is it doesn't say enough, not only about what we've done, but what we're going to do with the next year. When I tried to look to find out where the conference was this year, when I looked at an old issue from last fall, and I couldn't even find out, an ad was in there saying where the conferences are. So that kind of information in the news where, in the magazine, would be extremely helpful. Not only for events like the International Space Development Council conference, but all the other small conferences that are going on around the country and any special projects that are happening. So I think that's my main reason for being dissatisfied with that ad.
Now, I'm going to Dale Amy, who's...
That's okay.
Different subject. We can come back to this if we have more time, but remember, in the media future, one of the easiest things to remember is George@nss.org. I mean, it's simple and it's easier to remember than George's clearinghouse until we get this broad distribution.
And AdAstra editor.
Also, but again, the suggestion could go through George, but George is the one who gives the editor guidance. I mean, so initially, it's good for George to get a feel, as he's new to the organization, of what you guys think about it so that he can work with the editor rather than being bypassed.
Jim, may I clarify? I received communication to headquarters. It doesn't need to go to George, send it to NSHU.
It was administrative, so give wrong... Membership, of course, what we have anymore.
Don't bother George, send it to NSHU.
Yeah, 2,000 emails a day is gonna...
Only difference is like, if George suggested a change.
But all that has to be in AdAstra as well as on the website. I had a question that does not relate to...
Dale has the floor on that. She's the next person. And then there's Peter, and we can come back to you.
Okay, Dale, I haven't talked, I'm in fact, I've worked at the room with many of us, though. Yeah, George and I were discussing earlier that NSS should have a blog or something, a blog. I think this answers a lot of other questions that come up on things which have immediacy to them. I think that is a good place for the director to put out, there was such and such a meeting today with a link to where the text is stored or the list. There was such and such a launch today, here, a link to an article on it, very, very current information. You don't have to put a lot in, you just put a sentence or two, the link to where people get the source. You make NSS become pretty much the place to go to find out what's current. And also, it's the place where people in the society can actually find out what's going on. There's that single point.
Can you sort of work out some of these bases?
Yeah, basically, yes. And what can additionally help with that is that several of our society members, very long-term members, myself, Glenn Reynolds, Ransome Burke, all have major blog logs. If there is something that goes up and George pushes, sends basically a note to us that it is something, we can push on traffic onto the NSS blog.
All right, and Northdale.
Yeah, co-op them. They're already us. They have an incredible audience. I mean, Ransome Burke is trans-terrestrial, using...
Forgive me for suggesting we could call that blog George Magazine.
I think it's still taken.
There's already a George Magazine.
Peter, did you hear something back there? Okay. Claire?
You mentioned the chapter rebate system a while ago. I would like to see a show of hands with those people who have had good experiences with chapter rebates.
There's some suspicion that chapter rebate is an axioma.
Yeah.
Well...
I think we need to do something different.
For more than a record, I believe George is riding the herd on making sure that this rebate system starts working again. George has pledged his life is for sure to the sacred honor to make sure it's working. Because I know some chapters like mine, that's their own, basically their own source of revenue, is the rebates. And we blow out and bring in some people, and it's our revenue. And it finally got to the point, I would send it through a forms, I would send it a letter, say, here are those people. And then if I was lucky, I'd remember and call headquarters, do you have these people? Where's my check? And then finally, I realized my life was too short. And I just said, to hell with it. And then we said, why would it bother, you know, we're just self-members, we happen to meet people in person. We're not gonna do it in order to make money. So, George?
Do me notice, you're working on it.
This is probably the longest-standing, most severe, irritant and chapter headquarters relations, I think, of anything in the organization.
And it's good for a brief mini drops.
Yes.
On that subject, we finally have control of the website. That is chapter after this, and there is a cooldown on the website for the forum. On the forum. So when a member goes to join, he can say what chapter, you know, he is with. And at least the right code we're getting this database. In the past, there were a lot of errors where a meeting forum would come in and there was no chapter indication or the person keying the information omitted, that, you know, that chapter information. And it was just an administrative problem. And at least now, one of those steps has been amended.
And I don't know about other chapters, but our chapter has no idea what our code is.
But now we don't need to know. It goes through the web and tell them to do the cooldown, to specify the chapter. If they specify the chapter, then at least one step should normally fail. It doesn't guarantee the other steps.
Actually, I should point out, if I may, just near yet, I picked this form up from your organization right here at the ISBC. And right where it says for chapter username, see no stamp, it says Oklahoma Space Alliance.
That's because we pulled it out of the waste basket. We got it here. And all we had a chance to do was add, put the sticker on it.
But I've been to other NSS events, I've been to Oasis events, and they have their same forms. They don't even bother to put down Oasis or any type of identifying tag. I'm the one that usually goes around, in my case, and I'm gonna either...
So when you put the one on the website that we can download and print off ourselves, put a part where we can, where we get to enter so that the whole thing is a PDF where we can enter a chapter.
Yeah, what we're going to do, we're gonna put a brochure on the website that we download as soon as we can, over there.
Step two. Ben, no, to this one chapter. Step two, what Bruce is talking about, is that when someone signs up online or in the mail directly to National from an area where there is a chapter, the chapter reader should be notified. You get an email or something saying, so-and-so joined. So we have our own mailing list. We send announcements to local people. And if I don't know someone joining, they're not gonna get it.
There's a, this is a longstanding chapter request. I've been on both sides, as a chapter officer and an NSS officer. Part of the problem is essentially geographical limitations. If somebody were to join where I live in Naperville, Illinois, I'm not so sure my chapter should get a notice, or maybe it should. When we have an event in the Chicago area, if we have the money we want to send out in mailing, we'll make a decision for this event, how far out do we want to extend the mailing list? How many do we want to send and so forth? We sort of do it on an odd-hot basis every time we need it. If we want to recruit members to join our chapter, we might do that once a year, at which time, we would, in the old days, we'd go into headquarters, they send us the current labels. So the thing we had six months ago becomes obsolete. Now with the system of names being available, you can get the names periodically, you can do a periodic sweep. You could ask for headquarters, what's the current list two months, a month before your next meeting? And then we send them out. I'm also not sure you really would want your mailbox cluttered on, or most chapters, your mailbox cluttered on a one-on-one basis and have the computer decide what's close, what's not close, or if you have several chapters, which chapter gets noticed.
Well, I don't advise you to follow the areas, but in most other places in the country, you can get software that'll tell you, that say the zip code for our chapter is 85749. Anyone within 50 miles of 85749 actually know about that.
Yeah. And no, no, it's wonderful thing, Ben, is that our database now has that capability. We can tell how many people are within like, you know, 50 miles of you. And so I think what we'll probably be able to do is to say to chapters, you know, we need to find like a region, you know, which will probably be like some circle around somebody's thing, somebody's place. And then there's no, I mean, this is all potentially automatable. I mean, so if you want the emails, you know, I mean, it'll take us a while to work on it.
Bruce should, the system Bruce talks about, someone selects, drop a menu, says, I'm in southern Arizona. Automatically, the directory should get me...
Yeah, there's no reason why not, but Randall should really speak to it because he's the one who's been programming.
Saturday night, an email was sent out to every single chapter reader with the entire list of current members in their state or in their region, if it was a region within metropolitan areas. So that system is now operating.
I didn't get mine. I didn't get mine, but I have another, Peter got his.
Well, that's because you haven't identified yourself.
No.
He's probably not a fan of this.
I was on the list of ties.
Please identify yourself.
Ben, he's in, it's Space March here.
We literally went through, it was actually Sunday morning at 1:00 or 2:00 AM, but we went through the AdAstra, latest issue of AdAstra, the chapter contacts list. And for every chapter, we sent it up to send an email to the person listed as a chapter contact.
Are you in the chapter contact list? I am.
He wasn't in the chapter then.
Uh, we were in my last 20 minutes. No, but were you in the latest issue of AdAstra?
Oh, we were.
No, no. So we'll get, just drop off the information with us, and we'll get it to you guys, too. It's already been dropped, dang.
The chair, the chair needs to piece some information eventually. They need, if the person is currently an NSS member, they also need to know, does the person wish or not wish to be contacted by the local chapter? They need to have that checkbox on the form that says, please have, the chapter, local chapter may contact me or please don't contact me.
What would you recommend is the default? If they don't check the box, default would be no contact or default would be contact?
Default would be contact.
Yeah, yes, contact.
Okay. So in other words, you want something saying, I am not interested in joining a chapter this time?
Or something like that. Just so that we don't contact somebody who may irritate.
There's also some laws about that, too, although I'm not sure if...
You can always contact your own members, I think. Let me ask you a question while Josh Powers is in the back room. We've now had a close to two-years experience with NSS inside, NSS online report. Let me ask you the same broad question that I asked before about AdAstra, as generally as to the content. Very satisfied, dissatisfied, somewhat satisfied, or dissatisfied? All those who are very satisfied with the content of...
Maybe we should ask who gets it? Because I think the intergigological don't get it at all.
Well, let's, all right, we'll check that out.
You'll ask it first because that's...
If you don't get it, you won't be able to vote. How many people get on AdAstra?
I'm glad people get it. I don't get it.
How many people read it and get it? So the first question is, those who get it, who are very satisfied with it? Those who are somewhat satisfied with it?
You skipped satisfied.
I'm sorry, you skipped satisfied, satisfied is some category. Somewhat satisfied. Dissatisfied. Okay. I'm thinking about Josh's question.
Always has to be one and give it, doesn't it?
Who would those people think is giving? We talked about ways of improving AdAstra while Josh is here. Can we have some discussion of ways that you think that NSS online report can be improved? You're up first. Identify, please.
I'm a non-member of any chapter.
Sure. Sure.
I think the magazine needs to work. And my job, I'm not supposed to be either politically active or getting involved in things. They have certain rules to say it.
Okay, goodbye.
If they read the magazine, they like it. And when they go to the website, all they see is the magazine there. They don't see anything going in depth on the article. Or if they go to the website, I jump on the website, and I bring the magazine in, it's the same as the website. There seems to be no difference between the two of them. Now, the magazine, I like. I don't get it as often as I figure I should. But I go to the website, and the same articles are right there, there's no difference.
Okay, you're looking for additional content on the website, in other words, right?
Either that or bring in something that glorifies the articles in the magazine.
The philosophy for the way in which AdAstra was put on the website was to give non-members who did not get the magazine a chance to preview in the sense of, for example, you've got a table of contents so you know what type of information is in the magazine. There are a few articles that are made available on the website so that non-members can basically get a sneak peek at the magazine because AdAstra's not sold on newsstands. So the only way you are actually gonna see that magazine is if you get it from having been given it by perhaps a local chapter, perhaps it's at your library, or perhaps you have a friend who reads it. But I suspect that most people have not had a chance to see it. So before they buy into the organization, we're basically offering them the opportunity to say, you know, one of your, one of your membership benefits is AdAstra magazine. Here's a table of contents. We are now adding back-issued table of contents so people can actually get a little bit better feel for what the magazine is all about and what type of content it has. To help make them, or help them make a better decision, do they want to join National Space Society? So we're trying to do this as a service to non-members.
We were talking about the online report.
Yeah, okay.
Dick Feddersen, Tucson. Personally, I prefer to archive stuff from the online report as opposed to keeping the magazine, you know? There are physical limitations for the storage.
Yeah. Somebody like tells me. Other comments about our little report, about the content, the mix, et cetera?
I have a complaint about the subject line. I was getting that thing for a long time before I realized it was a junkie. And/or number such and such, what the heck is that?
That's generally not what we use anymore. Generally, the subject line these days is NSS online report number, issue number or something. or something. I know in the past we did use N O R.
That's not what I saw the last time.
No, I'm not sure the last one was in.
That's right, and that's Josh Powers, and member of the board of directors and the editor of N S S Online Report.
Yep. I haven't even yet told you the video that we saw. But as I recall, you do have at the bottom where they contact you, it's just the little thread, which I think is perfect.
So remember, I gather this is a generally conservative crowd that reserve its top ten ratings, but since there weren't a lot of very satisfieds, I mean, some of you guys must have other suggestions, things you'd like to see that would make it better. I think that's what Josh would really like to hear.
Johnny Five would say more important.
And any other comments or suggestions? Bruce, you may event it first.
I'm Bruce McKenzie from Boston. I also have a little bit of an insider view. I actually have distributed the.
A little bit louder, please. Just a little louder.
Okay, um, it is now free, the distribution is now free. We used to pay one of the three cents per person receiving a provision, and we could now go weekly. My personal recommendation is.
Keep going.
Wiggly if you write the other half.
I don't know if you want to read it weekly, but if you want to read it, it could be shorter. The reason we keep it weekly is not just strictly from a time perspective. You have to keep in mind that the objective of N O R is not to replace other online news forms. We're not going to time report on the kind of space news that's happening on a database that gets reported on other websites. There isn't, maybe one day there will be, and that would be great, but there isn't really enough inflow of N S S material to justify weekly, because it would end up being pretty shorted until one.
Josh, let me, let me continue. I would suggest approximately weekly that something go out, something, and maybe only one topic or one main topic with a couple other topics. So basically, take the, including quarters, whether it's called N S S Online Reporter or not, is another question.
There are pretty frequently other distributions that they can make, so first releases of that work.
I've got, I'm going to put a temporary suspension to this discussion, because Kirby Iken has to catch a plane. Okay, and so I want to open the floor, if any particular questions that might be addressed to Kirby as the chair of the board of directors, or as a non-US member of our board of directors, or is familiar with the, what was on in Australia. So if there's a couple of there's any questions, it's to Kirby first. Claire.
Kirby, what can we do to make non-US chapters feel welcome, or more welcome than they do?
I don't know, we can tell that in front of them. Well, every, every chapter or every country has its own different set of issues. Like it or not, the English language is, is expect, is sort of like the second language in most countries. So I think most people are prepared to accept the fact that we deal with English. And I don't think we can really change that, it's not an economic thing for us to be able to reproduce AdAstra or something else in a different language. I think, I think being sensitive to what is going on in other parts of the world, its relevance to our bigger picture, and trying to help identify activities of those countries and chapters and members could actually be a part of. Trying to be less US-centric in our recognition of what are important steps along the way. I had a fascinating discussion over lunch with Nicholas Turat, head of N S S France the other day. It actually confirmed in large parts some thinking that I had, and that our model of how we operate, well, how N S S operates in the US, and to a large extent, also the way it operates in Australia, is not going to be an effective model in other countries. The notion of the general public doing something in a community sense just does not apply in a lot of other countries. So for example, in France, it's, there is no other pro-space organization, because that general concept of pro-space community involvement doesn't exist. So we may well to want to expand into other countries, maybe to have different models. And so in Europe, Continental Europe, for example, we might, might look at being active through professional level involvement, through engineers, aerospace participants, et cetera. I think the biggest thing though is simply being sensitive to the broader scope of activities going on elsewhere. To give you another interesting example, the relevance of the Chinese atomic war last year, that is perceived very differently in other parts of the world. And we need to appreciate what that, how that is responded to in other parts of the world. And if I just give you an interesting analog of how the Australian press picked that up, and, and so this is a journalist from the biggest newspaper in Sydney. When that was reported, the way they reported it was that there were now three countries in the world that had put humans into space, only two of which could do it at the moment, which was Russia and China. Now, that was an interesting perspective. And so there are sensitivities out there, and we need to appreciate that other people around the world, if you think.
I'm glad you mentioned that, because you know, we wanted someone to talk here about the Chinese space project. I went so far as to contact a professor of Chinese, who said, "Well, you know, maybe this person could help you." And Brian said, "Well, these people at the Chinese embassy maybe can help you." And we don't think, never got any, not sure we ever asked the right people. But Brian said, "Well, don't ask the Chinese embassy, ask these organizations that keep watch on what China's doing." Well, I really, I really wanted someone from China. And I don't know if I even would have been allowed to in the current, I just never pursued it far enough, and I don't know if we were even, would have been allowed to in the current security situation.
Wasn't more time-intensive aspects of trying to find an ISDC.
Yeah, yeah. But maybe each Q could kind of keep more contacts available for those of us who have a useful.
Actually, when it comes for ISDCs and other events, when it comes to inviting very high-level speakers with national implications, who, if A invites, might impact the efforts of B and C to invite them, all kinds of contacts like that should, in the first instance, go through headquarters. Headquarters will win at those efforts. And secondly, with all due respect to George, who's still new on the job, it's been our view of the field that those, those are the things that headquarters is uniquely positioned to help the people in the field, but they have the two-way experience, expertise, and contacts.
Exactly.
So if ISDC 2005 wanted to contact Chinese, they would probably be coordinated through headquarters.
That's what we tried to do, and it wasn't under George.
We had preoccupied.
But with a little more energy on our part, we might have been able to push it farther. But is that the kind of thing you're talking about, Kirby?
It, it's, it operates at a number of different levels, yeah. Somebody remarked, and in my way Nicholas sort of said, "Well, this is an international space development conference, why is it all about what's happening in the US?" Now, that's not true, but, but that was the perspective. And, yeah, there's a lot of interesting things going on elsewhere in the world. And frankly, there's a lot of it that people just simply don't know, so what don't know about, you come.
And that's why it ought to be at the ISDC. And it ought to be in AdAstra, and it ought to be in N O R, so that people will know about it.
Right. Jerry?
I'm Karen Harris from the Chicago Spaceport, N O R five, and the CDR West program. I'd like to know, could we have an international report in the AdAstra? Get maybe four from various countries? Maybe put a little adage that says, Australia's doing this in their country, China's doing this, Spain is having this. Just a little report from the front of another country. Sort of little call.
We actually had that at one point, I don't know what happened to it.
Yeah, I haven't seen it lately, and I thought it might be a very good idea.
I agree, and I think that's a very good idea, and I think we'll have to look into what happened to the previous arrangements, but.
Sure.
And it's also, to some extent, it's up to the international members of the society to feed that process and pass information on. Sadly, if you looked at the Australian comment, it would be extremely short, so there's nothing happening in Australia, so. But clearly, there are a lot of other places, there are a lot of things happening.
There are a lot of places that are, things are happening, and as well as getting more information from the states, you know, you only really get like an immense rate, because I thought, there's quite a lot happening in Australia.
Jim?
Kirby talked about the cultural differences and everything, and I think we could probably take advantage of what goes on here in the United States, in that there are certain cities that have a sister city that is in a foreign country. And I think maybe the chapter leaders can take the lead on this, and they could have a sister chapter that is one of the international chapters, so maybe there could be an arrangement between like Western Spaceport and AdAstra.
That's a cool idea, James. That's a very cool idea.
Or Oasis could have a sister chapter with N S S France.
I'll go you one better. American chapter should help form a chapter of the country to be a brother-sister chapter with.
And we did that, we did that in the past, and again, for whatever reason, I don't understand why it's sort of fallen into disuse, but I suspect that's essentially happening at the chapter level, the people who are responsible.
At the chapter level, we've never gone on.
I mean, I've tried to communicate with the, especially with N S S Australia from time to time, or sometimes like the emails that I had in the past get bounced any time I tried to send something to Michael James. But I always try to keep a line of communication going as far as what's happening over here, you know, launches at Vandenberg, or something that works.
We have a question over there?
Yeah, with due respect, Kirby, you said.
Identify, please.
David Kayward, T C L five. With due respect, Kirby, you said, "How much is happening in Australia?" I disagree. Wasn't Australia, on a low budget, beat up NASA's high budget with the pandemic?
Well, that's true. That, yeah, that's one isolated example, and that's not being done at a national level, that's being done by universities. And the expectation is that that program will probably migrate out of Australia in the not-too-distant future, which is what tends to happen with things in our countries. But you're right, there are things going on, but at this point in time, there isn't a single space activity that our members can relate to in Australia, and that's one of the difficulties that certain countries have. I mean, our members are interested in the long-term goal, and so we're not necessarily interested as much in what's going on in Australia, but as how we as Australians can contribute to the long-term vision. So what's actually happening in your own country isn't necessarily that important, it's, but there are times where we overlook relevant things going on in other countries.
What was just brought to me, the dish.
The dish. Oh, lovely, lovely. Any questions here for Kirby? Before he goes back down under?
Worse than down under.
As well, I throw something for thought. We could have, on the web, maybe a single page handwritten in some language, German or, you know, French, Spanish, whatever. At the top of the main page, it says, you know, "Espagnol, Deutsch, et cetera," linked to that one page. And, and, but, but you want more than that. I wonder if these automated translation things are almost good enough that we might?
Not in my experience.
Australian is very close to American English.
That's what I'm saying. I have a little experience with automatic translation online, and I've experienced it with some very strange things.
I'll second that, because I, that's what I've had to resort to in order to find out what the content was of the German Space Society site and N S S France, because I speak neither language. And.
However, you know, you guys, just to be of an idea, maybe we could arrange links to foreign websites, other than the translation, their own German space site website.
That's what we could do, is find a member who actually speaks the language, yes, than the translation.
So Jeff, you're linking the second, the second part of mine. Let's find a similar organization in another country, even if they have no affiliation, if they have just similar goals. So our handwritten French will say, you know, well, French is a bad example, but, but, but we'll get a little bit that's well-written, and then say, "We recommend the following, you know, organizations and websites in your language."
It'd probably be further without a recommendation.
You know, we're living in the 21st century, we could probably ask our members in other languages to give us a nice paragraph typed with a translation.
It's like trying to get chapter.
And the link is a great idea.
I'm sure we can find it to translate to one page, you know, in my, and I don't want to translate the whole website and all the press.
Exactly, but one page, yeah.
How much here for Kirby, some questions?
I don't have one.
All right. I'm going to go back to N S, to N S S Online Report then.
Yeah, sorry to leave, but thank you all for. Just as an observation, I did a quick head count during the meeting, there's a remarkable large representation of the total. I mean, you want to say that, that sounds bad, but there's, I counted about forty-five people here.
A week.
At least it looks.
I know two board members who are, will be sleeping for some time.
So that's fabulous, and I applaud you all for making the effort to be here on this last day, but thank you. We'll see you later.
Just a point, just a point where we left off of N S S Online. I just wanted to say that prior to very recently, whenever it went out, it cost N S S a few hundred dollars for each issue of N O R. We no longer have to worry about that because of the efforts of Bruce McKenzie. He's the man who did the work to make the process that.
I never, in that regard.
Excuse me, it took two years to be, you know, two years of subtle hints.
He's as persistent as I am.
That's right.
I started to figure the mailing list two years ago.
In this regard, I'd also like to point out that Bruce has been the glue that held the electronic communications for N S S together for more than a decade. Bruce is the one who put together the list, the one maintaining, he's the one who monitored N S S Discuss, the one who tamped out the flame wars. And particularly, as we started getting into this internet age, we never could have done it without Bruce, and we're just very, very lucky to have him.
Yep, second that.
One other thing before we get to N O R, I also have to catch a plane. And as senior vice president, my role has been kind of being available to just every part of the organization, and I've worked with most of you over the year, the last year, on different problems you had in your different areas, just a resource. And I've been paying a lot of attention to the policy committee, you saw a paper I wrote on behalf of the policy committee here, and so I was wondering if any of you had any particular questions for me before I, before I left?
Why is peanut butter so expensive?
Because it's just as long. Any questions for me then? I'm going to then turn, yes, Bruce?
Yes, I have a policy thing. We try to set up a email legislative alerts for those people who are willing to take alerts more frequently than the general membership. And due to a variety of, you know, lost email and confusing syntax and technical problems, it has not been used. But we do have a list of members who are willing to get legislative alerts more frequently.
And I understand through data management, we'll be able to augment that, and we'll probably rely on it much more heavily. This would be a big tool for us, it'll allow us to react fast to, in a small scale, but important developments.
Well, I, I have a suggestion, and I don't know whether this will work, but people here can tell me whether it can or not. I would suggest that initially, we, we send our legislative alerts out to everybody with a prominent thing that says, "If you don't want to, click unsubscribe," and then we have, in that manner, create parallel lists.
Yes, but we also have this list of people who are willing to accept more frequent or more detailed information.
Well, the thing about that is, we don't want to hit them too often, because even, even volunteer activists have a certain saturation point, and I think it's probably good to hit them at least two, three times a year, if not quarterly, but if you exercise them too hard, you're. But if you exercise them too hard, you're going to start getting tuned out.
Boy, quite bull.
Depends a bit on whether you expect them, on just what you expect them to do. I mean, accept information is one thing. Write a daily letter is something else.
I consider a legislative alert something that requests action on the part of Bruce.
Information about N O R or something. Like, what's your action?
Speaking of legislative alerts, that's probable the Space Commission will issue its report as early as June 2nd, certainly by June 11th. So we need to be aware that we may want to respond, or at least issue letters of support, or agreement, or disagreement, or whatever, to this. I assume there's going to be a press conference somewhere in Washington to cover it, and maybe cover it on NASA TV. We will attempt to tape it and report on it, whatever critical aspects may be. But the individual people can respond also, that will be helpful.
Jim's just...
Well, yeah, I think it could be a policy-type thing, because we'll need to get input from N S S. And a suggestion I had talked to you and to Jim about, as far as getting the chapters to request meetings with the editorial boards of their old papers. In some communities, it's just the editor of the paper, but in other larger cities, you actually have an editorial board, which is comprised of leaders from the surrounding community. And what you want to do is you want to go in with that audience and present the N S S case with regards to the vision of force-based exploration, and why the editorial board should come out in favor of whatever the recommendations are going to be.
Are you looking for editorial support, or are you looking to alter their news coverage and make it more sense in the space issues?
Yes.
Thank you. Yes. Identify yourself, please.
Probably a minority here, I don't know.
Identify yourself, please, Kirby.
I'm John Luke, I'm in the Oklahoma chapter. I've been in L five since early. I'm a professional archaeologist for 30 years, but I support the space program since I was a kid. But I just wanted to address the board as a policy, make them think about a little bit. I've been concerned for the last couple of years that not being a part of the board decisions, how much effort of a total organization are we putting toward ISDCs? I don't want this to seem thus become just a convention sponsoring organization. So what I'm suggesting is someone who can do it, and analyze, how much of the whole organization's effort percentage-wise is going on into ISDCs and supposed to anything else.
That's a good question, and as any former ISDC chairman can probably tell you, not that much. We have in the past essentially delegated most of the ISDC functions to the local group that's hosting it. One of the things we are trying to do, and we're trying to do, is bring more of the core functions into the national leadership, so that we have a similar look and feel every year, one that would be more consistent with other organizations around the country, and particularly trying to bring programming at a more national level to take all the burden off of local people, where we have a broader pool of leaders who know where the bodies are buried, where the speakers are. But for the most part, also previously, registration was a big problem, took a lot of manpower and that stuff. The increasing computerization has really lowered that burden and become mostly automatic. The ISDC, though, has been known, and basically is our flagship event. It's the one event that sends, brings the attention of the space community to us. It's our time to have a focal point. And what we do with an ISDC is up to us. And in essence, it's an area which I think the board is going to increasingly focus on, is how we can use the ISDC in itself to further our N S S purposes and vision. And there's another, it's an area we have not really done, as we've been putting out fires, but we're going to go toward that right now. Does that answer your question? I've got to take off. I thank you again all for all your wonderful work over so many years. And I'm looking forward to seeing you in D.C. As I said, each of you with four or five colleagues, and preferably with a lot of younger colleagues. We really, really want to inspire the younger generation not only to be in favor of space, but to realize that here is a platform and a vehicle where we will give them a chance to actually make a difference. We are not a real monolithic organization from the top down. There's a lot of opportunity for people to come in this organization, and our job is to try to empower them to help promote space in the way they feel is best for them. And they come to the ISDC next year in Washington, and if it's anywhere close to what we expect, they should come away really galvanized and expecting to do great things, and we're going to try to help them do that. Thank you again. Turn this over to Jim, because George has to take notes, and George has to speak. Please come to the N O R stuff, because he has to get input, so it should be your... Thank you.
I think we have about 15 more minutes. So who's next? Yes, sir.
My name is Jim Shane Oliver. I'm a new N S S member, this is my first conference. I've got three issues I'd like to talk about, but I think some of them are going to be attended to. One was, I was hoping there would be an attendees list of where they're from. I'm from Iowa, there has to be no chapter in Iowa, I think it's supposed to be...
You shouldn't be talking to me if there's no chapter in Iowa. So don't leave here today without this.
So if there's a list available, attendees or even members in Iowa, it would be great for me to be able to contact and maybe get something.
Are we producing a member of the attendees list, or?
Well, the database is H Q entered in, does allow... well, it isn't a database, that's the trouble, it's a spreadsheet. But there is a separate column for the state that someone is in, and I know that spreadsheets can sort of be converted to databases with quite a bit of effort.
I would recommend keeping it as a database next time.
But since we didn't have that many people, yeah, we can run down the list and then search out if anyone else is in.
Larry, did you want to answer her answer?
Yeah, I want to add something to you. When we look at our database, not only for chapters, one of those using their area, if someone wants to start a chapter, you give us a zip code, we can kind of, for the whole state, we could probably...
Yeah, but he's looking for another activist, maybe, an activist, like, the people who are here are more likely to be activists.
Right. What was your next question?
That issue is going to get resolved.
See me afterwards, okay.
And I just wanted to compliment the people on the conference, it's a great conference. I got a lot of good information. There was one particular session I was interested in, and I don't know if it was from the local development or if it's a national program, but I was interested in a second call of Congress, which was an effort to help people with new ideas, perhaps an commercialization of ours, to refine with, to have some education, but to be able to go to a room of knowledge and say, hey, is this a good idea?
Yeah.
It's a good idea. And I would like it to be kind of an ongoing, continuing thing from maybe that national level. You can send in information and hit some type of response, know who to contact. So I'd like to see something on incubator-type of thing.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe continual.
Yeah, go online. I've always thought that trying to do it through an ISDC, maybe start things, but it doesn't...
Would you, Jim, would you like to be involved and work with me a little in terms of helping to flesh something out? I mean, we could develop a little group of people who might contribute.
Yeah, I sent a couple letters to the National Chapter, previous, previously they came back, I never got a response, I sent stuff to NASA commercials, I don't know.
All right, well, we'll get your response now.
Greg Allison, our Chair of the Executive Committee, has been very active at previous round conferences, but of course, that's exactly why he wasn't active this year, but he might be able to help you get some...
I think it's great.
Please get your name and email address and a piece of paper so I can contact you.
And the final issue is on education. Again, I wanted to follow the education track here. Unfortunately, there wasn't a lot, very good, well, it's here, but it seems to be very concentrated in the elementary education, and we're looking at post-secondary and after post-graduate education. And we're doing a very unscientific survey, it's not published yet, and we're still educating the nation. But it looks like there is a market for 30-somethings, they are beginning to respond, and it's 30 years old, and they're looking for what we were offering, an interest in maybe a year and a half, two years, in youth education, and willing to pay in the neighborhood of $17,000 per year for that educational...
That's right.
And I would like to see more education beyond just, or people getting involved, not beyond that second type of...
Yes, we...
There's a small group.
As a member of education, many...
I want to spot two of them. First of all, as President of the Royal Space Volunteers Society listed in N S S to initiate two, I just received from Randall Severay, a list of all the N S S members within 100 miles of my homes at cook. So it doesn't sound, I don't know what's going on here, but it sounds like we're getting the database together and able to provide that kind of information to people trying to start chapters, so I recommend you probably contact George and get it set up for you. Secondly, as Education Chair, or Chair of the Education Chair Track at this ISDC, and as founding member of the current iteration of the Education Committee, I took on the adult education portion. And trying to put together this education track, there wasn't much volunteers, it was in elementary. Going through the Education Committee meeting Saturday afternoon, most of the people are schoolteachers. And I have to constantly remind, and I've been tasked with reminding the Chair of the Education Committee, that education is a much bigger field, as you're saying, than just elementary schools. Education is educating the entire population of the United States, especially from our point of view, a small subcommittee, small subsection of the U.S. Congress. And then providing resource materials for schoolteachers and for kids, which I'm going to do on a promotional website. So you're absolutely liable, or either liking to send me an email address or email message, using the addresses in N S S. And I'll put you on the distribution list for the Education Committee, and let's make it happen.
Jerry, your ask, you had your hand up?
Well, I had my hand up, because I wanted to let him know that the Education Committee was just for, and I'm working on it as part of the committee for the elementary and upper grade school. We have someone from colleges, and we have men for adults, and we are going to try and get information out that will be helpful.
Let me... you said the education track was formed, it was at a kind of primary education campus, and certainly those people's names will be available somewhere, you can try to reactivate them.
I was on the board, I'm trying to reactivate them also.
Okay. Who next? Could you please identify yourself?
Yes, Brad Sal, I'm from San Antonio. And on the website, we're, I was just wondering, is it going to totally change the look of the website, or is it just some enhancements to kind of... I'd like to see it stay consistent. I'm just curious if...
That's an issue that's going to be addressed. The capabilities of the website are going to be enhanced. There'll be new features, new capabilities here, especially for chapters and things for members as well. But we are going to be doing this based on our chapter volunteers, who are now in control of the website, so you're going to have to realize that the amount of time that they have is a finite resource. And you're looking at a good chunk of the core of our volunteers are here in this room today, with Randall, and Ronnie, and Arthur, and Dave, and where's Bruce? So myself, so we're the ones who are going to actually be doing this work.
But to come along and totally redo it, would be a lot of work, wouldn't it? I mean, I'd rather see it be consistent, you know, and just refine it.
Well, that's one of the things we do have to do, is to prioritize our tasks. So for that reason, we had a strategic planning session Thursday night to give the... everyone was invited to that session, and it was to give people the opportunity to say what they thought was important about our website, and then to rank all these different things. So everyone had a chance to vote as to what should be the purpose of our website. We had extended meetings Friday morning, Friday afternoon. So this is something that we are taking very seriously.
The plan, I mean, we could really lighten up the way this is going to happen. Have a look and feel.
Have a look and feel is pretty good. I'd say like it just doesn't get to go there very often, though. When I do, I'm satisfied, except for the one one y'all talked about, is the membership section, trying to kind of find that, and that's kind of...
I think maybe we just try to make the information spread, you define, and then try to probably more...
Thank you. John?
Yeah, just to continue on the same thread briefly, most of you are probably aware of the spacerep.com site, and it's a sort of a mega for people to get information. And we should try to do some of that same thing, so the people become familiar with our website, source of information, and then sample like a timeline, a calendar of upcoming events, especially immediate events, would be a very good addition to that. But that's just sort of the aspect of attracting, attracting people that would let them know they exist, and providing a source of information at the same time.
Isn't Space Ref run by one of us?
Jim?
I was just going to say, isn't Space Ref run by one of us in N S S?
I think Keith Cowley.
I'm drawing a total blank on his name.
I have no idea if Keith is a member.
I think Keith is one of us.
Is he even? Keith Cowley. I don't know if he's currently...
He may have been, but I...
In the past, he was a member. I don't know if he's still a current member of N S S.
Well, like I said, we need to bring him back into the fold of these, and co-opt him if he is.
Absolutely.
We had some... I need to do something, so I want to make sure, I would like to make sure we have a little time. So, yeah, no problem. So if we could maybe cut it off after maybe one or two last comments?
What? Who wants to? Yeah, Jackson?
With the Off the Frontier Group, one thing that I've noticed is that the board have the tendency to assign only board members to any act committee, committee board, that activate mostly non-board members from any committees. The board should be leading, not being the sole position as well.
The people who've been doing the work for getting our website up and running on a volunteer basis, have been composed of a mix of board and non-board members.
Yeah, but mostly other committees, you know, it's not across the board, obviously, it's like, I just noticed that not too much where, you know, when I'm on a committee, no, we have the only board members. We definitely have a board, the track, we're just, you know, percentage is stretched already, and so the best way to reserve, to conserve our board resources, and have more of the members, you know, of the society as a whole, being involved.
And I'm sure that, you know, it's appropriate that we will be doing it. For instance, we did do it in this case, the Chapters Committee, which is another committee, we have both board and non-board members as well. I can speak as to the composition of that committee and the Internet Committee, because I was in the, I'm in those groups. I don't know about the other committees, so I can't address that. I do know that the Education Committee has non-board members as well. So I suspect that it's probably a minority of committees at this point in time that actually are limited to board members. And one last question, do we have? One last question?
Yeah, I do.
Stand up and identify yourself, please.
Cliff McLauren, N S S Executive Vice President. And I s... well, no more jokes. My question is, is there any good reason we can't put banner ads on our N O R the way the Mars Society does with its...
In O R or on the web page?
Very frequent emails.
You mean the N O R or on the web page?
In N O R, the way the Mars Soci... every time the Mars Society sends something out, it's got an ad, and I'm sure it's getting some, at least miniscule revenue from that, and we need to find new revenue streams anywhere.
Are you not talking about the Mars Society that they're sending out via their Yahoo Groups distribution, in which case all the revenue is going to Yahoo members? Is that what you're talking about? Because I didn't think Google emails had...
Well, I thought... I tend to skip right over this and get to the meat of the thing.
Well, I tend to skip right over this, get to the meat of the thing, but at the head of every single release that the Mars Society sends out, they've got some ad or other. And I don't know if it's.
Send me an example, because we also are investigating converting NOR into an HTML based newsletter versus its currently text-based newsletter. We went with the text because we were concerned about the fact that there are people whose email software has difficulty parsing HTML, so we wanted to make sure that we didn't leave anybody out.
And we are still concerned about that, we think there may be ways to provide those, which is what's requiring the extra effort, is to ensure that everybody is happy.
Yes, sir?
I don't like banner ads for generating revenue, they're more reciprocal, so that you get on somebody else's site, so you get more hits.
Well, that would be nice, too.
Thank you very much, and I'll turn things over to George.
Okay, so I think we're going to sort of close this now, but I want to just make sure that I emphasize that indeed, you can write me an email. And if you don't get a response immediately, you can call me. And the number's on the website. My email is very simple, it's just george@ns.org. And let's start talking. If there's stuff that I can do, you know, obviously, we have a limited amount of manpower, but things that you feel strongly about, we can try to integrate in. The thing that I want to do is I'm instituting a little bit of a new tradition, which is, I have my own sort of personal awards for a few people that I've been working with. This may not be particularly interesting to people who haven't been doing stuff, but you're welcome to just sit in, but I also don't want to bore you, you know, with that. So I'm going to ask the people in the Conference Committee, and also people that I've been working with, stick around for a little, just because I have a small little thank you for them. And I know Claire wants to make a note.
Yeah, just briefly, we were under orders not to lose money this year. I think we may have done it, we won't know for a few days.
You will succeed.
As part of this effort, we decided not to have merchandise available here for you for sale, we got samples. What we did is we put a very wide variety of things, mugs, frisbees, shirts, sweatshirts, coasters, a wide variety of things, available on CafePress as ISDC merchandise should be available for three or four more months. So as you leave, I'm going to hand you one of these cards, if you wanted ISDC merchandise, especially the size that we didn't have here, please go to CafePress and have it sent to you directly. We do have a few of our samples left, so if you wanted a frisbee, or a coaster, or a size large, whatever we have left, see us, we might have it, and that way you wouldn't have to worry about.
Claire, what you did was actually a good execution, because it reduced less manpower to have to deal with merchandise.
The manpower, we were really short. But also, we don't have a stash of stuff that is available, like the Voyager T-shirts from sometime in the 70s, we're back when we were in a high chapter, or 80s. Dale?
Yeah, this is a suggestion that we can probably work through with the web team. Now that the ISDC is over, there is a little logo space on the National Space Society homepage, which I think should now point to wherever you've got your thing for selling this stuff.
No, it's, I'm going to find ISDC 2005.
Oh, well.
Speaking of which, there's some forms in the front for ISDC 2005, last chance to get the $75 registration rate.